Hey, we're gonna get started. Okay, um, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Um, we have a last-minute moderator switch, so that's what we're figuring out up here. Um, if I first wanted to say that if you have questions when we're doing the issues, you can go ahead and just raise your hand after the speaker has finished and we'll call on you. If you have questions for a candidate, we do need those to be written so we can preview them ahead of time. We have two volunteers over here, Joanne and Cheryl. Um, if you want a card, just raise your hand and they will be happy to take one around to you. So hello, welcome. My name's Elizabeth Breezer. I'm with the League of Women Voters in Metropolitan Columbus. This is our sixth candidate forum of the season. So welcome to the Meet the Candidates Forum for Columbus Area Races. We hope this will provide you with information for the upcoming November election. First, I would like to thank the Greater Hilltop Area Commission for cosponsoring this event. They're always such a wonderful partner. We really do appreciate them. Please make sure you have a voting plan for the November 7th elections. Early in-person voting starts tomorrow, 8:00 a.m., Franklin County Board of Elections on Morris Road. If you want to vote by mail, you need to submit a written absentee ballot request to the Board of Elections, which you can still do. Uh, polling locations will be open 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. on November 7th, and you can check your polling place location by contacting the Franklin County Board of Elections. In addition to the candidate forums, our league publishes a voter guide in which candidates provide written questions, I'm sorry, written answers to questions. Our online voter guide is available at vote401.org, and we just got our hard copy guides, which will be available at all libraries in the county. The League is dedicated to expanding public awareness about government issues and encouraging active participation in government. The League does not support or oppose political parties or candidates. Please visit us on our website to learn more about the League or to become a member. This forum is being livestreamed to our Facebook page and a recording will be available afterwards. And now I will turn this event over to tonight's moderator from Leah Rudno.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we were gonna have another moderator, so please bear with me as I just try to stumble my way through this as a stand-in. Uh, my name is Leah Rudno. I'm currently a member of the Greater Hilltop Area Commission. Very pleased that you were all able to make it out tonight. Welcome to the Meet the Candidates Forum. The races participating in tonight's events are City Council and Columbus City School Board. We will also be hearing from local issue explanations from the School Board levy as well as the Columbus Metropolitan Library levy. I will begin by explaining our procedures for candidate races, which were agreed upon by all participants in advance. Tonight, each candidate will give a one-minute introductory statement. I will then ask questions, and candidates will be permitted no more than one minute to answer each question. Each candidate will have an opportunity to answer the question, and I will change the order in which candidates are asked the question for each subsequent one. Candidates will then have one minute to give a closing statement. Some of the questions have been pre-written, and the remainder will be solicited from the audience, as Elizabeth was saying. Audience members who wish to ask a question will submit the question in writing. The volunteers will review the question before handing it to the moderator. The League reserves the right to reject audience questions if they are inappropriate, duplicative, or are addressed to a specific candidate. Candidates can see our timekeepers up here in the front. We will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds, and when their time has expired. If a candidate continues speaking, I will say thank you and we will move on. All right, so before we start the candidate races, we are gonna hear two local issues, as I mentioned. First up, we have the Columbus Metropolitan Library Levy, which is issue number 16 on the ballot. Kathryn Strauss, not Kathryn, uh, Kathryn Strauss, is here to give us an explanation of the levy.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm not a political person, so bear with me. I'm just going to be a strong advocate for our libraries, and I'm joined by Pat Lizinski, who is the CEO of the library. So I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes and talk to you about the amazing work that the library does every day, and hopefully you get to experience it on many days of the year and not just today. If this is your first time here in a while, please come back. Libraries are magical. So our libraries in Columbus have so many important statistics. Our important initiatives are Young Minds, Life Skills, and My Library. And our Young Minds does things like 62,000 visits for the school health centers for grades K through 12, Summer Reading Challenge, which services more than 40,000 kids in the summer, Winter Reading Challenge, that services more than 4,000 children, and Ready for Kindergarten, helped 90,000 children become better readers through storytimes and other different initiatives. I could go on and on about Young Minds. Another thing that we do that's very important for our community is life skills. And so what we're trying to do from a life skills perspective is to upskill, educate, train, provide resources to the members of our community who might need help formulating a resume, obtaining their GED, learning English as a second language, and the list goes on and on. But it's real practical skills that help everyone in our community. Our third strategic focus is My Library, and it's really to be responsive to the needs of our library. An example of that, although it touches on Young Minds, is that during COVID, we passed out COVID tests. Um, we, we provide food to children who don't have access to it, who might get free or reduced lunch during the summer or having snacks after school in many of the locations. We really try to be nimble to what the needs are of the community, including building brand-new libraries as often as we can, um, which is a positive for our overall community because it provides meeting space like this. You know, the, the new vision for me, this is for me, of the library, um, is to be a gathering place. It is about the brick, about the books and the electronics and the computers and the printers and the videos, but it's also about meeting and collaborating. So those are all the important things that we do from the library. And because of that, we are asking for a levy this November, and the levy is the first one we have sought since 2010. When we had our levy in 2010, we said we wouldn't come back to the voters for 10 years, and we have been very good fiscal stewards, as evidenced that it's now 2023. Thirteen years later, we're coming back to the voters. And we do need to come back to the voters because we have certain restrictions by state law that require us to keep a fund balance at a certain amount. And our projections, that we have been monitoring from a board perspective um, for a number of years, show that we are going to reach that limit, that we are going to be under our limit if we do not have the passage of this levy. We are asking voters to approve a $1.5 million levy, and effectively, it will have an overall levy rate of $2.41 for every $100,000 of homeownership after, if this levy passes. What are the other things that I should be addressing, Pat?
Well, I think that, uh, oh, that are in particular. I think so many people are asking questions about the reassessment. A lot of confusion about the reassessment. The voters will vote on the assessment as they stand for 2023. But the new assessments actually kick in in January of 2024. The way levies work in this state, you can hear this from the school board people as well, um, because of Howellsville 920 passed years ago, there's a cap at the time that you vote. So this 1.5-mill levy will actually drop to 1.07 in January because of the increase in property values. Similarly, the levy that was passed back in 2010 was 2.8 mils. It's collecting today at 2.18 mils and is projected to go to 1.56 mils in January. So because of the existing mileage that the library has, taxes don't go up 41%, right? They are capped because of that. It's very hard for the, for the public to actually see that in place. They see the assessment, they say our taxes are going up. Taxes will go up for some individuals, there's no question, but not the numbers that people think they are. We think the library's been just a really good steward for the last 13 years. There's a good track record in place. Um, and so we seek the, the support of, of our voters in November for continuing, hopefully, the good work that we're doing in the community. So I think with that, we, um, do we ask if there are questions, Elizabeth? Are you still with us, Elizabeth?
Are there any questions?
Oh, thank you. So one thing, and I didn't introduce myself. I'm Kathy Strauss, and I have the really great privilege and honor of being the president of the Board of Trustees, not only for Seth's 20th, but also for this levy campaign. The library is near and dear to my heart. So we do have campaign signs. If you would like one, please, um, we ask that we're distributing our signs outside. Um, I have my friend here, Kristen, who will have the signs outside of her car. So if you're a voter in Columbus and you support the Columbus Library, please do get a sign, tell your friends, tell your neighbors, and we hope we can count on you for your support.
One thing I've heard is concerns that the suburbs are also getting resources from the library, and so I'm curious about the funding that's coming from the suburbs to support the overall system.
That's a great question. Our library is a county system, so we operate in Franklin County except where there are suburban systems. So where there are suburban systems, Upper Arlington, Bexley, Westerville, Worthington, Southwestern, Grandview, six suburban systems, we do not, the levy would not fund where those systems are, and the residents of those areas do not vote on this levy. The only people voting on this levy or paying on this levy are those residents of Franklin County who live within one of our library districts, one of, within Columbus Metropolitan Library District. Thank you for beating me out to be able to clarify that. Yeah. You got it. It is way more than everywhere.
Yeah, I think what's important to clarify is this is what the library uses to fund everything that we do. All right, so the library gets levy money, also gets some money from the state of Ohio, and it goes for the materials that we buy, the programs and services that we give, um, the technology that people use, and anything that we do in the building. So I've heard, well, what are we gonna cut if it doesn't pass? And actually, I think what we'll do is regroup with the Board of Trustees and come back and say, well, if this levy doesn't pass, what are we gonna do with the next levy? Because we're not planning on what we want to cut from the library. Back in 2010, that was the Great Recession, and everything had imploded. We lost 40% of our funding from the state. We closed Sundays, we cut a million and a half dollars. It was a really dark time for us. This time, we're talking about continuing what the library does, and the other pledge we're making, I don't think we said, is it will also be at least 10 years before we come back again. You know, we realized that a levy that's 13 years old, someone voting on this was five years old back in 2010. So we hope we gave a really good storytime for those who sit in the audience.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move along, so we're, we're a little, a little behind schedule. Next up is the Columbus City Schools Levy. This is gonna be issue number 11 on the ballot this November. Caitlin Lynch and Carol Beckerly are here to give us an explanation of that levy.
Hello, thank you. Um, I did write out comments beforehand because I wanted to get seriously and not lose my train of thought, so forgive me if I'm, look like I'm on my phone or not Snapchatting or doing anything else. I'm just reading. So my name is Kat. Um, thank you for this opportunity. Um, and I want to start off by saying that as an arts educator, um, I've worked closely in partnership with CCS teachers for over a decade. And throughout the district, from early childhood to high school, east side to west side, one thing that's the same is the dedication to the work and the belief that all their kids are brilliant and worthy of the work. Um, and last year, I got the chance to see CCS from a different perspective when my oldest child started kindergarten at Westgate, just right around the corner. Um, and while no school and no system is perfect, our family's been so happy with their kid's experience. Um, dropping her off, I know that she's someplace where she's seen and known and loved, um, which as a neurodivergent person, raising another neurodivergent person means a lot. Um, I kind of get really nervous about speaking in front of groups, so I will do my best to just take some deep breaths and go slow. Um, but as positive as so much of the experience has been so far, as we think ahead, I admit I am struggling a little bit. Um, like many of you, I heard students from West High recently, um, the school that our kids will attend in just a couple, seven years, which feels like forever, and also tomorrow, um, sharing that their track is unsafe, so unsafe that they can't run on it. Um, and that's heartbreaking for my own kid, but at least for her, there's time. Um, our neighbors, the kids at West High now don't have time. They can't afford to wait, and they need this levy now. Um, and I know there are some people who are resistant to the levy, saying that we need to hold the powers that be in the district accountable for past actions. Um, and I couldn't agree more, as much as we're proud to be a CCS family. The kickoff to kindergarten, which started for us last September, um, was not what we initially imagined it would be. Um, and while we supported the teachers and the ongoing work that they did, um, the messages that we got from those higher powers were confusing and sometimes scary. Um, I'm fortunate enough to have an incredible partner and an understanding employer, so we navigated that first month of uncertainty pretty okay, but I know that others were not so lucky. So yes, transparency and accountability are absolutely needed moving forward, but please don't use our kids as a bargaining tool. Um, finally, as an early childhood educator, um, I come back to whenever I'm trying to understand something big or complicated, trying to understand how I would explain something to the kids that I work with, um, who are three to five. Um, and all I could come up with was, well, people are not wanting to vote yes because they're mad at the grownups in charge of this school because they think they made bad choices, so they don't want to pay for you to have... And then I literally just have dot-dot-dot question mark because I couldn't figure out how to put it into terms that made sense. Um, so, um, teachers need to feel appreciated and well-supported. Children need to, need safe, dry, and warm schools in which to learn, and until someone can figure out how to get those things without money, which would be great, I would welcome that, uh, or figure out how to explain to children, and me, and other parents like me, why it feels fair to not, to deny them resources they need to be well and feel safe because of the actions of grownups. Um, until either of those things happen, I will continue to advocate for the levy and ask that you do as well. Thank you.
Do we have any questions about the school levy? Okay, we have one. Board Member Cole.
Um, I can, in terms of, and I would encourage, um, everyone to check out our, um, webpage because we had, uh, at our last board meeting, we had an update on our progress, and we are making gains. And, um, I think that, um, what's important to know is that, uh, while we are making gains, that doesn't necessarily translate in the report card because the report card is set up in such a way so that we would have to make significant gains to get to that next level. And the story that's not just... What, 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 what is, you know, the devil is always in the details, and the details are, we do have a good story and we are making progress. And so part of what everyone needs to understand is that, um, our teachers are working incredibly hard, and they're making a lot of progress. And part of the spending, um, that we did with the COVID money was to focus really hard on reading. We added extra instructional coaches, a lot of professional development, and we, um, were incredibly intentional about making sure our teachers understood the new science of reading. Some of you are seeing that in the news lately. It was tied into the governor's budget. And I can say from having spent 13 years as special education teacher, this is the right work, and we're doing it with intentionality and with a lot of focus. And so we are seeing these gains, but they're just not enough to trip the report card into the next level. I, I could go off on a tangent about how the report cards are structured that way intentionally, um, but that's another story for another time. So we are making gains, and I can absolutely direct you to, um, the superintendent's report at the last board meeting or the second, the next one before that, where, um, we have plenty of data that shows that.
Who was your forecast? Six years ago, I got a part-time job because I knew in 2024 that I was going to retire. But I also knew in 2023 is when the state would start re-crazy properties, which is how y'all run these school systems. And so watching how things were going, probably, that and you get hounded, I got a part-time job. So whoever the person went to have it back in, to say, we could have left one down, really not seeing this coming. So who was your forecast? You not seeing that a ballot was on for the levy, having one of the worst times. You didn't see inflation, I get that. Going to the, going to the chicken, want more for their hands and all the others. So who was my master? And why are the Columbus City Schools looked at back at the Supreme Court back in the seventies? Said, probably that's the one where the fund is. I was very excited when they said we're going to have violence. The children will be benefiting from the violence. Like, whoa, I was nimble, but hey, a lot of people do, we'll get that right for them. Hasn't happened. We're still doing it on old people backs. Then they said, we're not a casino. Now we're gonna get money for the casino now, for this. Not happening. We're still doing it on old people's backs. They said, oh, for young people, violence falls.
Ms. Diggs, can I start with a couple of those things?
She's a, I have a parent, I don't work for a piece of...
You're a parent. Oh, we were bringing the parents out and convincing the other parents to vote for the Columbus City School levy.
Right.
Okay, then we're on.
Well, let's say Board Member Beck and we can...
I, I have a couple of things to say, though. If I could just address the timing thing, because I think that's a legitimate question. Why would we bring a ba, uh, put a levy on the ballot during a reassessment year? And, and the answer is, I think, twofold. One part is that we actually did bring this on the ballot the year before, and then because of the strike, we had to take it off the ballot because we weren't in a position to advocate for that because we were dealing with the strike and then healing after the strike. So we, we tried to avoid that, um, time. The second thing is, and I think this is probably the better answer to your question, is that, um, the need is what it is. And our job as elected officials is to communicate, communicate to the community, this is what we need. And we are doing that as, you know, in terms of our, we've had our superintendent give us a statement of facts, and we've adopted that so that we have a clear statement of this is the need and this is why we need it. And that doesn't change because of the timing, because of the reassessment, and that need exists. And we need you all to understand that as part of your decision about how you're gonna vote on Election Day. So it's not about, um, a, a choice, and it's not about, um, the, the failure to forecast as much as it is, this is where we are right now, and this is what our, our need is, and we've communicating that to our community.
We are about to get all of our school board candidates up here, so if they're, we're gonna have some more time to talk about some of the, the general stuff, but I want to make sure we have a lot of time for them to address your questions as well. So thank you both. Um, we are now gonna hear from the candidates running for Columbus City School Board. Candidates will have one minute, as I mentioned earlier, to make an introductory statement, and then a minute to answer questions. Um, candidates, if you want to go ahead and come up to the tables, they will conclude with a one-minute closing statement. We do have two microphones. Um, they are lapel microphones, but they work a little bit better if you just hold them, uh, pretty close to your mouth. So as we mentioned earlier, we do have a few pre-prepared questions. We are, um, encouraging audience members to submit questions. If you would like to do that, if you could raise your hand, um, so we can hand you out a question card and a pencil. We'll have some folks collecting those as well. Um, and we're gonna ask as many questions as we have time for. So to get started, we'll start here on the end. Jennifer, um, you have one minute to introduce yourself.
Thank you so much.
Oh, make sure to turn it on at the top and then give it about three seconds to boot on.
Okay, three seconds, there we go. Um, hi, I'm Jennifer Adair. Um, I have been your president of the board since 2019. Um, and, um, I am a parent in the district. I'm a graduate. My mom is a teacher. I am here because I believe our district needs a radical transformation. I am from this community. Um, I'm from Columbus. I live in Linden. I am a diversity, equity, inclusion professional, and I understand how systems of inequity continue to oppress our students. I am here because I want to fix that. And the work that I and my colleagues have done has made a difference in our district. And I'm proud of the fact that we now have a strategic vision. We have listened to the community to develop a portrait of a graduate. We have accountability metrics in order to ensure that our superintendent and direct reports are doing the things that we all need to do. We are making progress. Our children are achieving, and there is a lot more work to be done.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Ingles. I am a first-time candidate, but a longtime public education advocate. I started my journey when I was 19 years old, testifying before my local school board when they tried to ban the books, The Lovely Bones and The Perks of Being a Wallflower. And it was through those experiences and the testimony and the fight that I saw just how important a school board can be over the curriculum of the classroom and the empowerment of the community. I'm standing before you today as a public interest attorney. I work with labor unions and low-wage and immigrant workers. I've been working within this community for the last six to seven years, and I've been the board president of the Central Ohio Worker Center for the last four, where I've built the budget 300% from where we started and built up a full staff. I believe that I can take that skill set and what I've learned in our community and use that for the good of our kids, our students, and our staff. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandon Simmons. I'm a proud Columbus City School graduate. I grew up here on the Hilltop, actually just a couple blocks over, um, on South Warren. I, for years, as a student, I watched our, um, I watched our buildings crumble. I watched my teachers overwork and every, undersupporting, and every year I saw our board make the wrong... And every year I saw our board make the wrong investments in the district. So finally, in my junior year of high school, I decided to do something about it together with my fellow students, our teachers and parents. We were able to form a coalition that really forced our board at the time to address the building conditions that a lot of the students across the district were seeing. Causes much like a lot of our hundred-year-old buildings, the roof was falling in, the boiler was original to the building. And, and of course, there was no heat in, in the winter. So together we, we, or sorry, there was no air conditioning in the summer or heat in the winter. So together we advocated for the next couple, for, for the next year. And we were able to get, the result of our advocacy, excuse me, was an additional four point five million dollars to Columbus Alternative High School for building repairs. What does that mean for our students? That means this, this year, our students were able to return to a fully air-conditioned building for the first time. I want to continue that work forward as a board member.
All right, we are going to turn to candidate questions. We will alternate with who starts, but every candidate will be answering the same question before we move on. The Department of Education's four-year high school graduation rate goal for Ohio is ninety percent. How will you plan to improve CCS' four-year high school graduation rate, which is seventy-nine percent for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year? We'll start with Brandon.
No, I, I think there's a lot of different things we can do as a district. We're a very large district. We're a legacy district, which means our resources are spread across about a hundred and twelve different schools. We haven't closed a school building in ten years, but yet we've lost ten thousand students over the past ten years, just five thousand alone since the pandemic. If we were to consolidate our buildings, our students would have more resources. We wouldn't see buildings like West High School that are in, in disrepair because we're not having to maintain a portfolio of really old buildings across the district. That's just one thing alone that we'd be able to do. But also with the levy, continuing to advocate for the levy, we'll make sure we have the resources going forward and the staff and our buildings that our students really need to be successful.
So the question was around graduation rate, correct?
Yes. How will you plan to improve CCS' graduation rate, which is currently seventy-nine percent for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
Yeah, I think, so I think that we need to look at our student base as a whole child aspect. And that means are kids coming to school hungry? Do they have a safe place to sleep? Are they safe on their way to school, on their way home? Are they safe at school? That will contribute a lot. I think also we need to build up our mentorship within the Columbus City Schools. Because we know that the more adult contacts a student has throughout the day, the more they see that mentorship, the more they can see themselves succeeding in the future and really drive home that point. But you can come to Columbus City Schools and you could be the next mayor of Columbus if you choose. You can be the next president. You could be the next CEO. You could be the next labor leader. Whatever you want to be, Columbus City Schools is a place that can prepare you for that. We also need to help our parents understand the ability of the assistance that we do have. And we need to make sure that we are working as a district, co-partnering with the organizations who can make some of those things happen.
Thank you. It is a little of both of what they said, but let me tell you what we are doing right now. So the board of, the jo-, the job of the school board is to ensure that the superintendent is doing the day-to-day work. And that includes raising the graduation rate. And so the board has adopted a goal for the superintendent right now that we monitor to ensure that we are making progress. And the board publicly grills our superintendent about this goal. And not only are we looking at it from twelfth grade, we are looking at it from ninth grade because it's too late by then. And so some of the strategies that are in place right now really focus around matriculation teams. So like what Sarah said, the whole child, bringing in the whole school around a child to ensure that they're getting exactly what they need to continue year after year. It is also about school layout. That is something that the board will tackle and ensuring that we are using our resources equitably. So it's a little bit of all those things.
Thank you. We do have an audience question. So the library representatives stated the time horizon for their next levy. When does the school board anticipate meeting another levy after this year? And I will add on, how do you plan to be good stewards of this upcoming levy? Start here, Jennifer.
The regular cycle typically is four years. So we are actually seven years out. So like the library, we have gone past our, our regular time. Now, understanding that our funding formula has been found unconstitutional, it is by law that we must come and ask our taxpayers to support. The board, myself, I don't believe that that's fair. And, and we've heard that. And so I'm committed to trying to find alternative ways to find investment for our schools. Whether that be more philanthropic or ability for the district to generate revenue, look at our assets differently. We must do something different because it is impacting our community. But it's impacting our community because it's an unconstitutional law in a very broken system. So tackling that is really critical. We are, all of our finances are online. There is an open checkbook. You can go and see every dollar that's spent and how it's spent.
I would echo everything that President Adair just said. But I would like to add in some context into the alternative funding streams. We cannot alternative funding stream our way into public education funding. We just can't do it. We can do parts and pieces and projects and we can create subcommittees and do that kind of work. But we can't do that and fund our schools under the current system. I, I think that that's something that we should be fighting for at the state legislature and I'm committed to do. But it's also just kind of the reality of the world that, the way that it is. With regard to alternative funding streams, however, we have a high housing crisis in this city. We have a lot of assets as a school district. I think that there is a way to turn some of those assets into affordable housing and generate revenue. And that's exactly what we should be doing as a district. And we should be thinking about some of these community school aspects like pre-K, involving pre-K in that housing plan, involving pre-K in our schools, where our parents are and where our children are.
Thank you. You know, it's hard to say when, when we're have to come back to the community and ask for another levy. So a, as a school district, we get maybe forty-five percent-ish of our funding from the state. And every two years, when our state lawmakers rewrite the budget, they decide how much money we're going to give to education on a per-student basis. If we're going to get extra money for our students who are under a certain income level. So it's really hard to estimate when we're going to have to come back. In terms of accountability, what I will say is I will continue to do what I did as a student. When I was a student and our board members were flying to Miami to stay at rooftop pool, patios and go to a conference, but they were leaving the board in less than a year, I stood up, I advocated, I used my voice, I went down to the board meetings and I spoke. So I think that's what you can continue to expect from me as a community and making sure the focus and the priority of our district is student-focused. And it's what's happening in the classroom and we're prioritizing investing the dollars into people who are in our buildings every day, doing the work that really matters to your students.
Thank you. This next question will start with Sarah and then we'll go with Jennifer. Brandon, if you had the power to change one thing about our school district, what would that be and what would be the potential impact?
Just one thing? Okay.
So I, I think if I had the power to change one thing about our school district right now, it would be to really get the word out about all the great things that Columbus City Schools is doing, all of the great programs that are available. I mean, just the Columbus Promise alone is a huge program that will have a massive impact on our students. However, we need to support them through that program. Many students who go into community college take what should be or could be a two-year degree and spend six years getting that degree. We need to make sure that we're supporting our students all the way through that process. But we do that by setting them up for success at the secondary and, and lower education levels. So that would be one thing is just, I, I would hope to really create essentially a PR, a PR plan to make sure that we are getting out the word, we're connecting parents better to the resources that already exist. And by doing that, we can then identify what resources we need within our community.
If I could change one thing for our district, it would be to have just safer, more psychologically safe spaces for our children. Our children and our public education is under attack right now. Whether that be what's happening right now around LGBTQIA rights down at the State House or just how our schools are funded. And we ask our children who are under this enormous pressure in communities that are unstable, full of trauma, to come in and sit and take tests. And we ask our wonderful professionals to, like my mom, who half the time is more like a mother or therapist than a fifth-grade teacher. And so I wish that our children had the same opportunities that those in suburban schools had. Because they deserve it. And they deserve to be in safe spaces and safe communities so that they can thrive and really do what they're supposed to do in a school and that is learn.
You know, I, you know, I think a big opportunity for our, our district is to really change the culture and how we treat our in, in-building employees, our teachers, our food service workers, our bus drivers, our, our custodians. From what I've heard, more than anything across, I've been running for almost a full year now for the board and I've met with a lot of people. And what I hear more than anything is that our frontline employees, the people who work the hardest for the district feel that their voices aren't heard. I think we saw that in the strike last year that we had. So I would really focus on changing that culture if I could have that magic wand and I could change one thing to be the culture and how we treat our employees. I was driving home the other day, actually here on Hank Avenue, and I saw a, a bus driver stop and put out the stop sign and two little girls who looked like they were sisters get off of the bus and they gave the bus driver like a really big hug. And it just really reminded me of the community that our bus drivers work so hard to build throughout the district every day, that our, all of our employees work hard. And it's really important that we value them and we treat them with the respect and the dignity they deserve to work throughout the district.
All right, this will be our last question. We'll start with Brandon. How will you balance the needs and feedback of students, parents, teachers, and the community when making decisions as a school board member?
You know, I, I think it's important to keep the focus on what's happening with our students in the classroom. Educating our students is the number one thing we do as a district. It's the only thing we, we do that really tangibly matters is educating our, our students. And so I think when it comes to balancing, there are times where, you know, maybe what our teachers wants is an opposite to what our parents want. But I think it's important we remember, we all have the same values, we all have the same goals, we all want what's best for our kids in the class group. And so, you know, by having those open and honest conversations, a lot of times in the past, the culture in the district has been, we're doing this to you. We're doing this to you, our teachers. We're doing this to you, our, our special education instructors. And if we can change that culture to we're doing things with people and we're bringing people along because they're willing and they're happy because they have the trust and confidence on our board. I think it's when things are going to be a lot easier to balance those different, you know, the needs are not competing. We all want what's best for our, our kids. It's just you have to create the environment where people feel comfortable and they feel respected to come out and, and to really partner with you.
You're up.
I think that's the key job of being a school board member, is that you need to be able to balance all of those things. You don't take one piece of feedback and all of a sudden micromanage a teacher or micromanage a principal. That's not our job as a school board. But our job is to connect people to the resources, to share with them, you know, how to, how things go in the school, how to, how to connect them to what they need and to make sure that the voices are being heard when they are running up against a wall, right? And so managing multiple expectations and managing multiple individualized experiences is something that I do every single day. As a union attorney, I'm constantly between the leadership of the union, the membership of the union, the leadership of the company or the city or whoever I am represent, you know, against. And, and also the community as a whole. And so I think that that's a, that's a thing that I'm already doing and just would implement into the work. But I think it's important to understand that all those voices are important.
I agree with what Sarah said and Brandon said. So the most important thing we can do as your elected officials on the school board is to ensure that student outcomes improve, period. And so that does mean we need to listen to all of our constituents. It means that as a board, our work needs to be more community-driven in terms of allowing authentic engagement. It means that we are holding our direct reports accountable through clear objectives and goals. And it means that we are effectuating the portrait of a graduate in what our community told us is important. And that is the role of a school board. And I'm really proud to have been here doing this and continuing to do this work. It is about authentic engagement. It is about listening. It is about open dialogue. And so all of those things are incredibly important to improving student outcomes.
Thank you, candidates. We will narrow due one minute each for closing remarks. Brandon, I'll have you start.
You know, I, I will be short and sweet. You've heard a lot about the levy today. And I want to just convey how big of this, an opportunity this is for our, our community. This is an opportunity to invest in our students all across the district. This is an opportunity to move the district forward, to make sure that we have the, the staff available in the classroom to continue to work with our students, to make sure we have the bus drivers we need to continue to be able to get our students to school. This is a really, really good opportunity for our community to invest in the district and to see our district move forward. And then that way, you know, we talked about West High School earlier and the conditions that are there. This levy is going to have some building maintenance dollars. And it's going to be harder to maintain our buildings without those dollars. It's going to be harder to run our pre-K programs without those dollars. The district, the challenges we face in the district will not get easier to solve with less dollars. They simply won't. They will be harder to solve and we will be having a very different conversation if the levy fills in just a couple of years. So I just want to say it's a really good opportunity to invest in our district and our community. And I think our values here are pro-public education.
I just want to acknowledge and recognize that for some people, this levy may be very, very difficult. And if you are somebody that falls into that camp, we will be fighting for you. I will be fighting for you. I will be raising your voice and making sure that it is heard. But that being said, this levy is critical to our budget. If we don't have it, we, the superintendent has made clear that we will have to cut six hundred and forty-seven positions. We have a counselor in every CCS building right now. We will not be able to withstand that if we do not pass this levy. We will be cutting social workers. We will be cutting custodians. We will be cutting the pre-K expansion, which is very critical to a child's growth. We will be cutting the ability to give every child a Chromebook and Wi-Fi hotspots. That is critical for the most, the children that are most in need in this district. And that's what this levy is about. So I, I understand that it will, it will be difficult for some people and some people will have to make their vote on that, on that basis. But, but know that this is really important for our kids.
If we want the vision for our school district that I know that we all want, we need a strong foundation. And we need to be able to provide our superintendent, who has a vision, the tools to make that. And that is why issue eleven is critically important. We are here because we want to see our students succeed. We are here because we know we can make a difference in the lives of our children. And we are here because we believe in the future of our district and what it means to our city. We are preparing our students for the future. We're preparing them to become leaders, to become the next generation, to be able to lead our city. And we need to be able to build the foundation. This is just the beginning. There's going to be a lot more work ahead of us. So I'm going to ask you to please vote for issue eleven. Please vote for Brandon. Please vote for Sarah. Please vote for Tina. And please vote for me because they ran out of time and couldn't say it themselves. So please vote for our children. Thank you.
Thank you to each of you. As they leave their seats, we are going to transition over to city council. So I am going to turn over the microphone to my fellow Greater Hillsup Area Commissioner, Cory Bates-Bride, who is going to moderate the rest of this forum.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Cory Bates-Bride. I am the vice chair of the Greater DHA. And so thank you for coming this evening. We will now focus on Columbus City Council races. There are a number of changes in the structure of city council this election season. We have Naya Walters, legal analyst for the city of Columbus here to give us a brief overview of these changes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Naya Walters and I am in-house counsel to Columbus City Council and a legal analyst with an RLC, legislative, excuse me, research office. So as part of that, I had the opportunity to re-put on the council side for the Columbus residential districts. So as a short presentation, I will start with where we were, where we are. So as a short presentation, I will start with where we were, where we are, and where we're going. So to start with where we were, in 2018, issue three was on the ballot in the spring election and voters voted overwhelmingly in favor by 76% to add two additional seats to council as well as to create nine residential districts. The charter amendment outlined several different requirements for those districts, requirements for council members as it relates to those districts. Some of those include that it had to, the larger district could not be bigger than the smaller district by more than 1%. You had to think about existing roadways and waterways and take into account existing community boundaries. So think of your area commissions and civic associations. And they couldn't favor or disfavor any political group. So those are some of the district requirements. There are seven in total. And you can find those in section seven of the Columbus City Charter if you would like to read that section. In addition to that, it requires that council members who want to run in those districts have to receive 250 signatures from that district to be able to get on the ballot. And they have to have lived in that district one year prior to the primary election for that district. And so those are the kind of baseline requirements. So with that, we set a commission that was independent and citizen-led. In February of 2021, of your community members and those members of your community hosted several different community engagements as well as did a survey that collected 2,300 responses from residents figuring out what it is that you felt was your neighborhood, what it is that you want to see in Columbus residential districts. And so they took the information they received and they began to work. And so they produced three different sets of maps. The first map was released in September and that map used 2010 data. The reason for that being is that the 2020 census data was late. And so they wanted to give residents an opportunity to see what this could potentially look like for them and their neighbors. And with that, that map went out for 30 days for public comment review. Secondarily, they sent another set. It was three maps using the official 2020 data. That went out again for that 30 days of comment review. And then they did a third time for another 30 days of public comment review. And so from those, they selected three maps to submit to council. Council chose the official Columbus Residential District map. I think it's important to note that council couldn't make any changes to that map, but they could just ensure that it met the requirements of the charter. And so with that, the biggest thing that I think residents should take away from this is that now you will have someone in your neighborhood. So we're thinking potholes, parks, snow removal, trash pickup. You will have someone in your neighborhood who is more acutely aware of those issues. And so right now, all the council members could live in the library and still represent the entirety of the city. So this will provide some geographic diversity in terms of where council members live. And so they are more acutely aware of the issues being faced by residents in different various areas of the city. The exciting part about this is that this is a hybrid system. And so what does that mean? That means that yes, you will have someone in your district, but you still have access to all nine council members. So when you go to the polls next month to vote, you will be able to see nine different districts that you will have to vote for. But instead of just voting for your district, you will vote for all nine of them. That's important because you have access to all of them still as your representatives. And so it is important to be aware of who is running for each district, not just the district that you live in. So it is similar to our pre-exist, to our current system, but different in the fact that there is someone that is living in your district that cannot present you and knows about the issues that are facing your neighborhood. Those are probably the most important things that I should share about those changes. You will have an opportunity to talk to the council members and council candidates to find out more information. Are there any questions?
Thank you all. Thank you, Brian. Next, we will hear from candidates from the nine districts of Columbus City Council. As a reminder, candidates will have one minute to make an introductory statement and then one minute to answer questions. They will conclude with a one-minute closing statement. So if you would come forth. Yes, I will. Once I get seated and comfy.
So you can sit and do that.
There are two more individuals coming, so we need to make a little bit. Yeah, so maybe pull that one table out as opposed to this. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and start knowing that there are two more folks coming. And just as another reminder, you have one minute to make an introductory statement and then one minute to answer questions. And then we'll conclude with a one-minute closing. So we'll start at this end with your introductory statement, Chris.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here today and being so engaged. It's important to kind of have these conversations and discussions, especially as we're facing this pivotal change to our city's history. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting as well as to G-HAC for serving as our host as well. It feels good to be back on the West Side as a former Westsider. We spent time in this very library connecting more of our residents to online resources and resume building. It's always nice to spend some time over here. For those who have not met, my name is Chris White and I am running to represent you on Columbus City Council from District One. And so District One is everything within the city of Columbus that is north of 161. I'm a dad of three, a husband to Julia, a small business owner, and have worked for corporate America for the last nine years. On the community side, I've served on the boards of various nonprofit organizations and currently serve on the board for Central State University. I'm running because I care about the city and I care about the direction it's heading in. And I know we'll get a chance to kind of speak briefly about our thoughts on various topics. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Luis Gil and I live north of this with the beginning of District Two. And I've been living there for seven years and I'm heavily involved with the community, love the community, every angle of Columbus, including what's happening recently. I'm originally from Venezuela. I live here. I came here to this country when I was 18 years old. My mom died when I was 16 and I decided to live and here we are. So thank you very much for being here tonight, especially to League Women's Voter and to the fact that we can change things in the city. I came from a meeting, I will spend a little bit more, from the Linden McKinley High School, where we have a tragedy there. And I was heavily involved from day one. I just want you to know that this is the stuff that we need to do as a city council. We need to get involved in the community because it's not working. So we need to tip a little bit the balance. We need to change, you know, do things differently. Because if you can't do the same thing, expect different results. So I'm here to, willing to change a little bit of the spectrum of the city council. Thank you.
I am Nancy Day Ockhauer. I am not from Columbus. I chose Columbus. I came to central Ohio to earn my master's degree and I stayed because I fell in love with Columbus. But I haven't just been living here. I have been serving here. For the past decade, I have been serving the West Side, addressing human service needs that have been identified by the community. I don't just advocate for needs. I actually help work with others to create programming to address those needs, food insecurity in the Westland area. I launched the Vill on the Hill, a program to help older adults age in place here on the hilltop, working with Melissa Green on addiction prevention and harm reduction. I hosted the very first free Narcan distribution in Franklin County. I have always been out there doing real work to serve the community, not just talking about it, not just doing photo ops, but real work. And I want to serve Columbus City Council so that I can do more good for more people.
Good evening. My name is Rob Dorns. I'm a current city council member running for reelection in District Three. Really excited to be joining city council again. I've spent my entire legal career as a union side labor attorney. And coming from the labor movement, it really demonstrated the power that a good career has on families. So for the past four and a half years, I've spent my time in council, invested a historic amount of money into workforce development programs, really trying to reach our youth here in Columbus and also our longtime residents that have not had access to a training program to allow them to ensure that they can enjoy the same progress, economic progress that many of our community have enjoyed over the past 10, 20, 30 years. Additionally, I focus my time on ensuring that we're making infrastructure investments to make sure that we keep pace with the growth of Columbus. That is something that is incredibly important as our city continues to grow, that we have the right infrastructure in place to support that growth and neighborhoods in our community. So excited to be here tonight. Certainly want to thank the organizers for hosting.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Adrian Hood. I am a retired master sergeant with the U.S. Air Force after doing three years of active duty service. I am a first con candidate. I have my masters in human services, my bachelor's in criminal justice. I came into this space in a very tragic way. My son was killed by Columbus police in 2016. And it is by that tragedy that I learned a little bit more about policies and understanding the importance thereof. I am a minister at True Love and I want to change my advocacy and my service to policies and city council to serve the community, not just Linden, which is District Four. District Four is in Linden. But I look to serve all of Columbus and I'm thankful to be here this evening.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
And give it a second.
Thank you. And you're an AV tech too. That's awesome. Good evening, Columbus. So honored to be here. First, let me thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this important discussion. I am Nick Bankston, currently serve you on Columbus City Council and looking to run for reelection to serve District Five, which is the northeast side of Columbus. I am a proud product of Columbus. Born and raised, graduate of East High School, the Ohio State University. I have grown up with this city and seen the city's growth. And right now, we are at a pivotal time in our city's history. And we need to ensure that the growth that we are seeing that everyone shares in our city's success. I currently chair our Economic Development, Small Minority Business, and Technology Committees and am committed to making sure that every resident shares in our city's success. For me, this is not about politics. It's personal. I'm raising my son Xavier Kamal Bankston, who is two years old. And I think every day about what type of city he's going to inherit. And I want to fight every single day on city council and continue to build a city that's more equitable, that's more sustainable, and that's worthy of his generation.
Thank you. Hello, West Side. My name is Melissa Green. I am a mom. I'm a very proud licensed social worker and I am a candidate for Columbus City Council running right here in District Six. I live on the hilltop with my partner Mike and my three-year-old son Miles, who are fourth and fifth generation hilltop residents. And many of you in the room probably know me. I've spent the better part of the last decade serving this specific community, whether it is in the capacity as a social worker, working in program development to address some of the issues for individuals in our community that are experiencing substance use disorders. Or if it was in my role as the neighborhood liaison, where I literally worked every single day to try to help uplift and empower this community that we're in right now. And so I want to thank you for being here. I'm excited to bring this perspective, this human services perspective into our work at city council for the first time ever in Columbus's history. If you so decide to send me there. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. My name is Emmanuel Reame. I'm proud to serve as Chair of Public Safety, the Environment Administration Committee. In fact, that was late because we held a hearing tonight on violence reduction and prevention. So that thing ran a little bit long, but I'm excited to be here as a father of three children in the Columbus City Schools. I have a wife that's a 21-year veteran of the Columbus City Schools. I'm also somebody that's a Realtor that has been on every single streets in the city of Columbus. In fact, I see Lisa Boggs back there. Met her at 605 South Ockden about 12, 13 years ago as I was working and doing broker price opinions to look at those houses that have been abandoned or, you know, were in foreclosure. So excited to be on council just as much as I was the first day that I served back in 2018. So I bring that passion back, asking for reelection to the seat and certainly looking forward to the opportunity to serve the community once again.
Okay, so let's begin with the questions. And we'll start with Emmanuel. Oh no, you're just, you're better. Easier for me to keep it straight. How would you balance the needs of serving the people in your district with serving the needs of the entire population of Columbus?
So what we have created and the voters decided by 76% in 2018 was that we geographically live in nine distinct parts of the city. I still represent all 915,000 people across this community. So it's a great place for our people in District Four to start. But my responsibility is there's just as much to up here in the hilltop as they are in Northland, as they are downtown to the South Side, to the East Side, et cetera. So I look forward to, you know, continuing to serve as we have, to be an advocate for all and look forward to having the opportunity to hear the concerns from all across the city because it is important that we keep that perspective and we're not horse trading like what Nick needs in his district and I need in my district and scratch my back and you scratch yours. That's what we're trying to avoid. And so we look forward to, voters have spoken, we look forward to serving in that way.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder, the timekeeper will be holding up my name, but I just wanted to remind you. There's one minute. Melissa?
I know that timekeeper is very anxiety provoking. I'm not going to lie. It's very hot. See it in your face. Okay, don't start chugging yet. Okay, so as many of you know, you know, serving the West Side of Columbus has been literally my life's work. Again, for the better part of the last decade, this is where I've been living. This is where I've been serving. And so I am incredibly excited to be able to carry forward the collective voice of this community into our work at City Hall. That being said, I do agree with Emmanuel. I think, you know, we also have to be able to both share the perspective of the community's voices, but we need to be able to work together. We need to be able to be collaborative and especially during this time of growth that we're experiencing as a city and as a region. We need to be able to work together, both as a body at council as well as with our municipal partners, to create a unified vision for how we're going to do that growth equitably. And so I have confidence that this new system is going to help facilitate that kind of collaboration. And I look forward to joining my partners on council and being able to do that work together.
I think this question of balance really comes down to something that every neighborhood is going to experience, that our region is experiencing. And that's growth. Understanding that every neighborhood is going to be impacted by the amount of growth that we are seeing as a community. So to balance those, it's really keeping at the essence that no matter what side of town you live on, we all want the same thing. We want a safe neighborhood for our kids to grow up in. We want good schools for our kids to go to. We want job opportunities that give us the ability, not only to survive in our city, but to thrive. And so to balance this idea between districts and at large, just keeping that in mind. And so to balance this idea between districts and at large, just keeping that in mind. So it's tackling the issue that every single neighborhood in Columbus is facing, whether that be housing, transportation, and safety, and doing that in a way that is one culturally competent to that individual side of town. Because it may look different on the northeast side, but what we do for one side of town should uplift every single side of the city. And that's why this new system may be confusing and it may be new, but we have an opportunity to do it together.
Something really did steal my thunder. Can't you notice that he did? Now, honestly, it doesn't matter what side of town that we live on. The thing that is important is everybody wants to be safe. Everybody wants to have an affordable place to stay. Everybody wants their children to get the best education that they can get so that they can be the best person that they can be. And that is what we should keep as a priority when we are making decisions now at city council. So that is how balance is made. We have to look at the humanness of us all and keep that in mind as we are making decisions. There is no big us or little you or anything like that. It is important for us to keep that in the forefront. And we are all humans and we all have the same basic needs and we need to make sure that those are addressed and yes, so that we can thrive and not just survive.
Well, it's hard to be in the middle here and it's gonna be harder for the folks to come out. I think most folks have hit the nail on the head pretty easy here, but I want to give two concrete examples about sort of this balance and how this system can sort of be a benefit. Is one, we talk about a holistic view of the city. One very concrete, literally concrete way of this is when we talk about our capital budget. We're talking about investing a billion dollars on an annual basis into hard side infrastructure in our city, and we're talking about water and sewer and sidewalks, all the things that keep the city run. Again, it is incredibly important to have a council that is focused on that holistic standpoint so that we can drive those investments to the places the community need them the most. The other aspect I want to hit on this is that, I'm asking this rhetorically because we got a lot of engaged citizens in this room, but if you were to ask the average person on the street, who would you go talk to if you had a pothole on your street? Well, most folks probably wouldn't answer, oh, the Chair of the Public Service Committee, right? They probably wouldn't know that. So one of the things I think is really helpful with this system is that they now know that their council member in their area, who they can bring those constituent issues to first.
As a pastor, it has been my vocation to balance the needs of my congregants as well as my community. As a Westland Area Commissioner, I had those same type of balance issues, the needs of our residents, the challenges of growth. I have always looked holistically. I have always sought input from a variety of people. And as all of my colleagues and future colleagues have said, we're all in this together. Columbus is one city that is working together for the greater good of all. And we should not be pitting communities against communities, districts against districts. We look to see how we can bring about the better good doing that together.
Being this Hispanic community, I always have balanced what's taking place in our community. It is important, just to give you a little bit of fact. And now everybody mentioned their kids. Well, I have five kids. So that went along when maybe I'd be one step ahead. And all my kids are professionals, every single one of them. So we need to invest in that. We need to invest in the community. Just to give you a little bit of myself and volunteerism, during COVID, I'm the one that took it to the basement of the governorship and I took the microphone and started informing the Spanish community. Because 83,000 people connected on that day because they were scared to death not speaking the language. Used to give you that alone with that respect, that aspect, is the fact that I want to do good for the city. We cannot be pinning down community to community. We need to do it all. There are communities that are flourishing right now. We need to invest in Columbus. And one of the things I want to do there, we need to ask those communities that are doing really well, I say, you know, let's hold on for a little bit and let's reinvest in Columbus. Thank you.
So the question was about balancing the needs of the district versus the city. Solving the challenges of the city as a whole will require council as a whole. Solving the challenges that we're seeing in specific districts will require council as a whole. So we must and can do both at the same time. I will also say this is kind of the benefit of the district system, right? You will now have a neighbor that you can just go to and speak to and tell them about challenges or issues, and they will probably also experience themselves living in the district. However, we as a council will have to do the job of getting out to all of our districts and hearing directly from residents. There is likely to be concerns and issues that go across all of our districts, and those are issues that we as a council can solve. So it's going to be about constituent relations and ensuring that we are keeping in touch with what is going on on the ground in our specific district, but also being ahead of what we are doing as a city as a whole and working collectively towards that goal.
Thank you.
So, because I know. I was getting. So, Mr. Lawrence, I'm going to give you the opportunity to do a one-minute duck claim statement. And then I'll ask you the question that they just answered, so that you can answer that.
Got it.
Okay.
So, just kidding. Restart my time. I'm sorry, sorry, friends, all right. Okay, here we go. Like this girl meets Mike, but here we are. So first of all, I am, I don't want to stand up because I don't think I can say everyone. I'm a council member, Luisa Barros, I'm the daughter of immigrants. I am the city, I'm the daughter of the city. I was a lifelong East Sider, born and raised. Grew up a total Columbus kid experience. And as a younger person, had the opportunity to serve with AmeriCorps for two years with a program called City Year, which I still work for today. And that's really where I found my love and my passion for service and became a community organizer. And so I wanted to run for council because I fundamentally believe that representation is important. Immigrants, migrants, refugees are the number one factor behind our population growth. And in the 50 years that my parents have been in this country, they had never seen anyone who looked like them or had their shared experience at the table making decisions for them. And so I think taking that in my experiences, working in community, and my love for the city was really the thing that brought me to the Columbus City Council and the thing that continues to fuel my work at city council. I'm also a mom. I'm an auntie to like 20, I don't know, I lose track. There's so many of them. But very excited to be here. Great. I was just gonna say, I'm sorry that I was late. I was at a community conversation. So thank y'all. And the question was.
And the first question I would ask was, how would you balance the needs of serving the people in your district with serving the needs of the entire population of Columbus?
Sure. So I mean, for me, this answer is simple, right? I think it's unique because I live in the district that I was born and raised in. I literally live four minutes away from my mom. If you told my 17-year-old self that, I would have called you alive, but here we are. But I think that I understand the East Side and I lived on the South Side, which is also part of my district, so I understand the problems. But the fundamental thing that I do understand is that whether I lived on the South Side or the East Side, the prosperity of the entire city relies on the prosperity of every corner of Columbus. It can't just be we need to rise up the East Side or the South Side or whatever. We need the prosperity of every part and every neighborhood of Columbus and every resident to be able to attain that for Columbus to thrive together as a city.
Okay, here's the next question. This is our audience. We have seen a number of large companies receive tax abatements and then not follow through with the terms of the council agreement. How do you plan to better ensure that city dollars have strings attached?
All right. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, so tax incentives, which is a question that we get often in many of the different forums. I think the challenge we have as a city is that we are competing not only with other states, but also our suburban partners who are going to bend over backwards to give any type of incentive to bring businesses to their area because that is the economic growth that we need as a city. I think there are already strings attached to many tax incentives that the city does offer. For example, I know we raise the required salary for individuals who were to receive tax incentives from the city to $20 an hour. In addition, there are also provisions to kind of clawback those incentives if we are not seeing that those jobs that they said were going to come, there are ways to kind of clawback that back and bring that money back to the city. So I think we can strengthen that and continue to do more of that to ensure that businesses are following through in terms of what they are receiving from tax incentive wise. But it is sad that it is a tool in the toolbox that is necessary for the growth of the city.
Tax abatement. Have you been to the meetings that they have every Monday? How much tax abatements they give? We have a lot, I'm sorry. We have a lottery ticket at this point where it's intel. Intel is a magnet to bring business. It started out from the very beginning for Columbus One. Started with $2 billion to $5 billion to $25 billion. Today is a $100 billion investment that is coming to us. It's a magnet. There are already 17 companies coming. Why do we have to give tax abatements to those companies? They want to come anyways. They want to be part of it. They want to be working conjunction. It is going to be mega. It's going to be constructions everywhere. They need approximately 25,000 employees. We need to get those kids ready. That's the part that I want to make sure that we get those kids in Columbus ready to get those. Minimum wage, minimum wage is $70,000. Average wage is $120,000. City Columbus can do better.
Intel's out in Columbus, right?
$25,000.
We already have mechanisms in place for reviewing corporations that have tax incentives and to make sure that they are coming through on their promises. And as Chris mentioned, ways to clawback, or you can, you either do it right or you can lose it.
So a couple of things I want to say on this topic. One, I want to compliment Councilman Bankston as the Chair of the County Development Committee. He led the process to make sure that $20 an hour is the lowest wage that can be offered in order for folks to get any kind of incentive. That's the highest that has ever been in the city. And I believe we're going to keep pushing that higher in Columbus. We need those jobs that are created to be living wage jobs. The other part that I want to mention is that these do get clawbacked. In the past three months, there's been a number of clawbacks that have been on the agenda because again, at the end of the day, the businesses did not hold up their end of the bargain and those were rescinded. I also want to mention also while Councilman Bankston has been Chair of the Committee, we've actually ended one of the largest tax incentives the city has ever had, DSW. Again, this was an incentive that was entered into prior to COVID and the business did not hold up in their bargain for a variety of reasons and they no longer get it. And so again, when people talk about these incentives, holding up their bargain, not holding up their bargain, it is really important to actually pay attention to what is actually happening on Monday nights. These are enforced, there are strings in place, and it's happening.
I am not an expert at tax abatements. I will be the first to say that. However, I do appreciate what Nick has been doing, but we definitely have a whole lot more work to do. I personally, from what I do understand, feel that there needs to be a lot more accountability on the front end as opposed to waiting. I just think that that's necessary for us to keep dollars into the city. I do kind of agree with what Mr. Luis said as far as businesses want to come here. They want to do business with Columbus and we need to be stronger at enforcing that need that they have for our city and hold them accountable.
So really quickly, I think we talked about what happens on Monday, but what our opponent, Mr. Gill, doesn't pay attention to or doesn't go to, something called the Tax Incentive Review Committee. Happens every single year where we review every single tax incentive that is done. The city of Columbus has over a 74 compliance rate with our tax incentives, over 100% compliance rate with the jobs that are necessarily created. Also, I want to make very clear, our tax incentive policy from a job creation standpoint are all performance based. If you don't create the jobs, you don't get the incentive. Now, she's not here, but I also want to make sure I champion council member favor because there are two types of tax abatements. There are job creation tax abatements and there are also residential. But because of her work, she has made loopholes, has closed loopholes around affordability. So tying our residential abatements to affordability to ensure that residents are able to share in the city's success by way of homeownership and by making sure that they have affordable places to live.
I always get sat next to Nick and it's never fair. Can I just say what he said? No, I think first and foremost, and I've said this a gazillion times in my work at the city, our laws, our rules, our expectations of people in the community are only as good as our ability to enforce them. And the work that has happened over the past year, I mean, you have not been on council very long, but the work that has happened to add additional checks and balances is the first step in our economic development planning to be able to make sure that the investments that we make, the expectations that we have of organizations that are moving into our community, that are trying to do business here, that are trying to support our families, to make sure that they are meeting our expectations as a community, as well as making sure that we're closing loopholes around residential tax abatements, single-family home tax abatements, making sure we're looking at commercial properties, that these properties aren't receiving city investments through a tax incentive and that are being sold off and made for profit, looking at every single one of those opportunities, continuously monitoring and making sure that we have the mechanisms in place to be able to enforce our expectations.
Thank you very much. If we all had our way, we would probably get rid of tax incentives, but it's not the case. Make no mistake about it, Intel is in, well, now New Albany because they annexed it in. But those competitors that are coming here, they will go to New Albany, they will go to Dublin, they will go to Worthington, they will go to Westville, they will go to every other suburb but the city of Columbus, if we didn't offer incentives as well. So make no mistake about it, it is this competitive environment, whether it's the city of Columbus or Austin, Texas, who is a peer city of ours. Whoever offers the best deal, that's where they're going. And what we try to do about it, like when we did the Google deal down on the South Side, but we created $375 million worth of payroll for just construction jobs down there. We gave $2 million away in abatements, but we got $15 million in return. So they are not a net sum zero. And so we are very, we're being mindful, we're watching these things, we're making sure we're doing the right things.
I too am not an expert on tax abatements. Thankfully, I sit next to this gentleman who fools me every day. But I will say this, and this is in the simplest form and not to be redundant, but this is a bargaining chip. And economic development is not always like the feel-good work, right? The feel-good work is like the community stuff that we do and it always gets icky and sticky when we talk about economic development. But what this does is it gives us an opportunity to put our people first. When you talk about job creation, when you talk about the incentives that we give them to ensure that people are making more money, that we are creating opportunities for homeownership, for other programs that we are running as a council, that's what this is. It's a tool. And we certainly hold people accountable. I think what people hear more of is the deals that are made and not the deals that are undone. Because that also happens every Monday. And I think that that's important for folks for just the same way that we are talking about one side of the story. We need to tell the other side of the story and that's available for everyone to see and hear.
Thank you. So these next questions are actually combined questions because they were similar ones. So if you need me to repeat them, I can. No problem.
We got two minutes because of.
You get one minute for the one question. So, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission estimates that at least 3 million more people reside in central Ohio by 2050. What is the city's role in addressing this increase in population and adequate affordable housing?
Oh, I get to start?
You get to start. Bring that in.
Okay. I mean.
I think this is all of our work, right? When you think about the increase in population, it's not just about affordable housing, it's about transportation. We are in the process next year of putting bus rapid transit on the ballot and we're going to talk about that. Because you can't talk about, you can't talk about housing without talking about transportation, without talking about economic development. These are all things that go hand in hand. You know, we talk about intel, we talk about the growth of what's coming to the region. Well, unless we, if we're really going to put our people and families first, that means that we need to make significant investments in these systems to ensure that. that we need to make significant investments in these systems to ensure that prosperity does come to our families. And so we can look at specific policies that we can't express in one minute that this council has put forth to ensure that we are addressing our growth, but it is the number one topic and the number one issue that we grapple with and you will see that in the policies that this council has put forward.
So I'm going to, I'll let Chair Dorance talk a little bit about zoning because that's a big portion of it, but we, we need to create density and so I'll look at it from more of a, an environmental lens. As we had Gina McCarthy here today, the former EPA Administrator, talking a little bit about the Inflation Reduction Act and what that means. But what, what it means for the future is, is creating density which has environmental act, effect and creates equity, you know, amongst us. And so we're really talking about the equitable lens that environmental sustainability creates and that density creates, which creates transportation opportunities, which creates, you know, just a myriad of things that we don't have today in a typical midwestern city. We're sprawled out, we have people coming down every single day saying, we don't want those people in our neighborhood, we want four units per acre. And so those are the things that we're fighting every single day, but we need to, we need to adjust because the people are coming and if we don't do it, we're going to be left behind.
So I'm going to kind of echo a little bit what Laura does was just saying, everybody owns a little bit of a piece of this work, right? And, and I think Emmanuel alluded to that as well. For me, you know, as a social worker, as the first licensed social worker to serve on Columbus City Council, the way that I look at this challenge is through that human services lens, I think, you know, people are very peoply, as my boss likes to say, and they are going to bring their great ideas and hopes and dreams for the future, but they're also probably going to bring some peoply problems and peoply challenges. And so we have to be investing, we have to be preparing for the future of what those challenges might be. We have to be making significant investments in our behavioral healthcare system and our access to care and supports. We have to be figuring out how to make that a system that is welcoming for people, that is easily accessible so that there is literally no wrong door. If I had my way, when you entered into the city of Columbus, our sign would say, welcome to Columbus, this is a city where we take care of each other. And so that's, I think, what, what my focus is going to be on as we move on to council.
Thank you so much. This really comes down to how do we manage one of our most precious resources and that's land. So that is looking at our land use policy. It is out of date. It is from a time that was not equitable, that was rooted in racism. So we need to make sure that we attack that, which is what we are doing currently. Density is going to come. It is going to come to every side of our city. But what we have to get folks to understand is that that's not a scary word. When you have more dense, more walkable, more accessible neighborhoods, it makes for a better quality of life. And so that is really what we have to focus. Two, when we talk about keeping things affordable, it is making sure that we are doubling down on policies that this council has championed, like the Community Land Trust, to ensure that we don't only have affordable rental options, but we have affordable homeownership options that in that program, over 60% of the homeowners are women of color who have children. And so when we think about this, it has to be, how do we have policies in place that create affordability both from the renter and multifamily side of things as well as the homeownership side of things? But we have to get our zoning and our land use policy in place to be able to absorb that growth.
Well, truthfully. We have this thing going on about that.
She didn't want to share her bike.
Truthfully, I mean, so much has already been said about, about where we're at right now, right? One of the questions that, that I've had and am still looking for answers to and, and understanding a little bit more when it comes into the zoning is why we didn't project as we've seen the continued and the steady growth that has happened in our city, why we weren't projecting that so well. But as I am learning, it does have a lot to do with, with the zoning, which is his job right now. And he'll go into that a lot more.
Man, this has been a buildup here. So this is nothing more complicated than a supply and demand problem, right? We have increasing demand every single year. We don't have enough existing supply and we're not building enough supply, right? So last year, there was about 15,000 new jobs created in Columbus, but we built 6,000 housing units for those folks, right? This is not sustainable equation. So when we talk about zoning, the question is, how do you allow more housing to be produced on a quicker basis? I'll go all the way back to the first place I ever lived in, in Columbus, corner of Stewart and Parsons, I lived in a duplex that was built in 1948. That duplex cannot be built legally under our current zoning rules almost in the entire city of Columbus. So we talk about density, density might mean a five, six, seven story residential tower. It also may mean a duplex. But when you look at our land map, our land use policy is from 70 years ago and we've outlawed so many different ways to increase density in appropriate areas in the city. And that is what the zoning initiative in Columbus is doing right now to reevaluate that process from top to bottom and replot those maps all across the city to allow more housing to happen in Columbus to accommodate for that growth.
You can have a back. I lived in the San Francisco Bay area for 20 years. I have the lived experience of what happens when a community doesn't take it seriously that your community is growing and you need more houses. They did not redo their zoning. And so they have, San Francisco Bay area has the urban sprawl of single family homes and you end up commuting an hour to work because you don't have a place to live when you work. So it's really important to me that nobody has to live the way I had to live when I was in San Francisco. The rezoning that Rob was talking about is critical. Having served on an area commission where we had to do a lot of rezoning because believe it or not, Columbus has a lot of agricultural land. And we also have properties in our townships that get annexed. And so much time is wasted on rezoning and variances that prevent houses from being built. And so this is what's really going to make the difference is having zoning that works for this season.
I want to go back real quick about what I mentioned with Intel. Her comment was, where's Intel? And she said, it's not in Columbus. I said, are you kidding me? Intel is looking for 17, anywhere from 12 to 12 counties for workers to be ready. Intel was not coming to Columbus. It came adjacent to Franklin County. Do you know why? Taxes. That's it. And they're talking about, you know, it's okay. And remember, I just want you to see this, I'm the only smoking wheel in this truck right here, only one. So Intel is looking for workers in 12 to 18 counties because that's not enough in Columbus. The education factor is going to be a big one. They're going to be open in five years. Are the city of Columbus ready? Are they getting ready? We know about this. It was between Indiana, Kentucky and Ohio. And I knew about this five years ago, asking if they knew about it. So I got involved with this from the very beginning, knowing and sound alert, we need to be ready for this and to be common to say, it's not in Columbus. Are you kidding? Are you kidding?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? We started talking about Intel. Sorry, if you could just repeat it from that, thank you.
Okay. The Mid Ohio Regional Planning Commission estimates that at least 3 million more people will reside in central Ohio by 2050. What is the city's role in addressing this increase in population and adequate affordable housing?
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. I mean, it's important for us to stick to the question that you asked so we can actually share our opinions on things. The population growth is going to be at the root cause of, is at the root cause of issues that we have related to transit, to workforce development, to housing, even how we lift people out of poverty. And so it is going to require a council that is collectively planting the seeds today for what we can address in the future. So if we're not working on housing today, there will be no housing when all these people come. If we're not working on transit today, there will be no way for people to move around the city. But let me also add that the challenge is not one in which the city of Columbus will be able to solve on our own. We have to engage our suburban partners to play their role and so that this entire region can take advantage of this growth. It is a good opportunity for us as a city to be in this position. A lot of cities in the state of Ohio are dying. Everyone is moving to Columbus because they want to be closer to job centers. It is on us as a council to work together to prepare for that growth and plant the seeds today. Thank you.
This will be the last question. I always wish for that tonight, yeah? So here we go. There's so many good questions, so I had to choose. So how is city council working with our schools? Specifically CCS. Our schools impact our neighborhoods and city, but there seems to be a disconnect. For example, in the tax abatement, are a loss of investment for our schools and neighborhoods?
Repeat it?
I'll repeat it. How is city council working with our schools? Specifically, specifically CCS. Our schools impact our neighborhoods and city, but there seems to be a disconnect. For example, the tax abatements are a loss of investment for our schools and neighborhoods.
Thank you. I think we've talked a little bit about tax incentives and their role for the growth of our city and the region as well. I think in the long run, these are benefits to the school district because when those tax incentives expire, we're having an increased revenue that is going to the schools. At the same time, I will say the council's already trying to work hard with Columbus City Schools. The Columbus Promise is a prime example. We know the workforce development needs for our region and so ensuring that students who are going through Columbus City Schools and are being successful can get a secondary education for free on the backs of the city of Columbus and our residents here. But for me, it's about deeper. We need to be engaged with all of our school districts because even with what we are seeing from workforce development standpoint and de-educating the students that we have, there are a lot of students who are going to be locked out of these opportunities if they do not get a chance to develop the skills necessary for the future. We want to call ourselves the Silicon Valley of the Midwest. If we do not engage our students to get those skills today, they will be locked out for generations. So I think a deeper connection is needed.
I talked about the city school a little bit back, maybe a few weeks ago. And you know what they told me? We're not running for city school. So there's a disconnect between what's going to happen in the future and what will the kids are going to have in the future. Intel, they didn't help out. But then we got lied to 525, you know? You know what happened to 525? It was a mess. I was there volunteering to give food, to help these people that were displaced. It is a shame what happened there. They don't talk about it, but they've been 15 years in power in the city and look at what's happened, what they have to show for. And I'm okay, I can take it from the right, I can take it from the left, not a problem. The fact of the matter, I want to bring that balance, you know? We had to have this little smoke because it's not working right now. 1.2 billion to 1.7 billion, remember that? We all got to pay for it. I was looking for the money-making machine in city council, there's none. It's our money. That's the stuff that we need to look, what's going to happen in the future in the city. And I'm sorry that I had to tell you this, but it's an alarm. We need to make sure that business is like as usual right now.
One of the important ways that city council can impact our schools is by creating programs that will address the social determinants of health. We can't create curriculum, we can't address what goes on in the classroom, but we can create wraparound programming to support our students so that we can address the issues that make it difficult for children to learn. That is a way we can have a direct impact that will have a long-term impact. It can also impact generational poverty. This is how Columbus City Council can help our schools.
I'll let Councilman Banksing dig a little more of the details on how incentives work with the school districts. I think it's important to note the revenue sharing that is created between the city and the district themselves. But again, as folks have joked, he's more of an expert on this than I am, so I'll let him get into it. But again, at the end of the day, when we talk about all these topics that are facing us, when we think about the success of young people in our community, to Nancy's point, them being housing insecure is going to be incredibly problematic for their ability to be successful at school. Them being food insecure is going to be incredibly problematic for them to be able to go to school every day, pay attention, do their work and succeed in life. Moving towards workforce development, the ability for the city to actually fund workforce development programs that are specifically targeted to CCS graduates is also incredibly important. We look at the growth industries in Columbus. You know, I come out of the, the labor, labor movement with the construction unions, whether it's IT or medical fields, there's the ability and there's already the framework for the district and the city to work on these programs together to give kids a real future.
I think that it is very important for us to understand generational trauma. We talk a lot about our young people and that is important, but we also have to remember that our young people go home to grown people. And it is important for us to remember that. I worked in the district for 11 years. To your point, if they don't have a safe place to stay, if their parents don't have a good paying job to sustain a life for them, what we do inside of the school buildings is not going to be that effective or impactful. So there's a partnership that is definitely lacking, that needs to be stronger, absolutely. But the wraparound services is something that we also need to keep on at the forefront of our minds because as we say all the time, our children are our future, but their parents are now. And so we have to be able to get to them the same as we get to the, to the young people.
Now you still have some of my stuff. So I'll touch really quickly on the incentive side of things. So in any deal that we do, any income tax that is generated over a million dollars, we share with the school district 50%. Just this past month at council, we wrote a check in ordinance of over $3 million to Columbus City Schools, over $5 million to all school districts that share in our incentives. So I don't want to get bogged down in that, but what I do want to echo is that this idea is that our job as a city is to be a chief and partner to Columbus City Schools and to the district. Because what happens from 7:30 to 2:30 in the school buildings is most likely determined by what happened to them between 2:30 and 7:30 in the morning. So it's going to be continuing to double down on investments, unprecedented investments in our youth and in our families and making sure that they have the resources that they need so that when they show up to school, that our schools have the ability to make sure that they're able to teach and not necessarily be simply social workers, police officers and everything else. It is a collaborative effort and we have to strengthen our relationship with our Columbus City Schools, there's no doubt about that.
I need a lot longer than a minute to talk about how excited I am about all of the opportunities to collaborate with Columbus City Schools. We have done a lot of really incredible work with the Columbus Promise Program. We have started a lot of really incredible work that I'm excited to be able to come on board and be able to help, help facilitate in the early childhood education space. And so figuring out how we can take a kid from birth through graduation and beyond and make sure that they have the resources and the tools that they need to be able to be successful is something that I'm incredibly, incredibly passionate about. I think that we know that school and community-based partnerships is the way to meet kids where they're at. Because kids, they don't have, they can't transport themselves around the city. They're reliant on their parents or on their, on their peers or whatever it might be. And so figuring out how as a city, we can continue to facilitate those partnerships between our community-based providers, how the city can continue to invest in those services, because less than 20% of those organization's budgets come from the ADAM Board, comes from, comes from the, the school funding that goes into social emotional learning programs. They're fully funding those programs themselves. And so we have a unique opportunity as a local municipality to make those investments that have no strings attached and we got to be doing that. We are doing it and I'm excited to continue doing.
So I'll agree with everything that has been said for the most part, but I will say that, you know, coming out of this post-COVID has done a number on generations, but specifically our youth and there is just trauma that, that is still in our community that will take probably another generation to even start to erase. We have a great, in my opinion, a really great superintendent now, one of the best that I've seen. I've worked with Dr. Harris, I've worked with Dr. Good, Dr. Tali Stixen, all of them. Dr. Chapman is really special and I think that we need to seize this opportunity to work with her and collaborate with her. But as I said in my hearing earlier, everybody's looking for space, everybody's looking for brick and mortar, everybody's looking for fields to play on. And I've been saying this from the get-go, from being at Northern Community Council, we need to see a day where we're taking the principals, handing the keys over to the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon and using our buildings to take the programming into our communities every single day. at four o'clock in the afternoon, and using our buildings to take the programming into our communities every single day. And that's what we need to do, and that's where we're going to continue to work with Dr. Chapman, it may happen.
I'm going to answer this question a little differently as someone who has worked in education parallel, not as an educator, but for thirty-seven years. The way that Ohio schools is funded is unconstitutional. And make no bones about it, the Republicans in the House want to dead public education. Those are facts. So while people point a lot of energy at us about tax abatements and other things, those are money, that's money that eventually does go back into the district. But you know who's not pouring money into the district? Our state. Those are facts, and that's period. So a lot of the energy that people throw this way, I want to throw it collectively back to the state legislator and say, what are you doing for our kids in Ohio? So that's first and foremost. Secondly, absolutely, we have to strengthen our relationship with CCS, but so does everyone else. So does everyone else, because this is an all-in effort. Our business community needs to be all in on CCS, because that is our workforce, our neighbors, our friends, our family, whether you have a kid or not, that is your future. Because you know who's going to take care of you? The kids that are in school today.
Thank you. So we're going to have closing statements. And just a reminder, we have folks, you have thirty seconds. No, you got a minute. To have a closing statement. And we can start with, let's start the bill.
Again, I wanted to thank y'all for coming out tonight. We appreciate y'all spending your time here with us. Again, my name is Adrian Hood. I am a first-time candidate, London native. Again, retired from the Air Force Reserve as a Master Sergeant. I look forward to shifting my service from my country. It's always been with my community, but I don't have to wear the hats and serve in my country anymore. And I look forward to the service in my community, as I've done and I will continue to do. Whether I'm in this seat or not, my service to my community is always going to be there. And I appreciate y'all coming out.
Well, thanks everyone for being here tonight. I think discussions like this demonstrate the challenges that are in front of Columbus, but also the opportunities. And so many of those go back to the growth of Columbus, whether or not we're talking about CCS, whether or not we're talking about workforce development, whether or not we're talking about infrastructure investments necessary to support our neighborhoods. It goes back to what Columbus is going to look like in the next twenty, thirty years with the growth that's coming to us. And I think what I'm so proud of is looking at leaders up and down this table here tonight that are focused on specific aspects of that growth, to make sure that we've got people with the right perspective to ensure that we're tackling these things to make Columbus a more equitable place in the future for folks who've been here for generations and folks that are going to come here and put down roots, just like I did, just like Nancy did, just like so many folks in our community have. And that's ultimately the city that I'm going to be very proud to raise my son in, and very excited that so many people, again, on a Tuesday night, is it Tuesday? Tuesday night, are out on the west side talking about these issues. So thanks a lot, and I look forward to earning your vote this November.
Well, first, first, let me say thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting us, also to our amazing library system for hosting us, and Hilltop Area Commission as well for being great partners. Again, I think you've heard a lot this evening, things that cannot be answered in one minute. But what I will say is this, we have our challenges. Every city does. But I would rather be tackling those challenges in a growing city. I'd rather be tackling those challenges with folks that I look at in this audience that provide me hope. Folks like a Sarah Ingles, who's going to go to the school board and bring us change. When I think about Columbus and the community that my son is going to grow up in, the future is brighter in Columbus than it is. So I would say in this moment, don't listen to fear. Let us lean into hope. That is how we're going to be different as a city. That is how we're going to meet this moment, to make sure that we have big, bold solutions. We need to have every voice at the table. That doesn't mean that we're going to agree, but that means that everyone's voice is needed in this fight to make sure that we build a city that is for us and done our way. Thank you again, I'm Nick Banksen, running for Columbus City Council for District Five.
Once again, it's Nancy Day Ockhauer. I realize that is a very difficult last name to remember, but I'm the only Nancy on the ballot. And it's great to finally attend a forum on the Hilltop, just blocks away from my office. Always, I always like to bring people here, make them come to maybe here in the community for meetings so that they can see the west side. Because as we all know, folks, west side, best side. I am running on my record of service to the community. Some folks talk about, you know, what they're going to do. Some folks show up for photo ops. I have been doing real work, creating programming that helps people address their basic needs. I have always been getting things done in the community, and I will do that on Columbus City Council. And I would appreciate your vote. All my socials, website, it's on NancyForOhio, use the number four.
Thank you, guys, everybody for being here tonight, and to the Hilltop Area Commission, the League of Women Voters for the work that you do every day. I feel like I cannot be holding a microphone somewhere if I don't take a moment to talk about issue one. You are going to see my name on the ballot this November. You will see every single one of our names on the ballot this November. But every person in this room, every person in Ohio is on the ballot this November. As a woman running for office in the state of Ohio, I'm on the ballot twice. And the most important vote that anyone could cast this November is to vote yes to support reproductive freedom in the state of Ohio. And this isn't an issue that's just strictly about abortion. If you are ever someone who's experienced a miscarriage, if you are ever someone who's experienced an ectopic pregnancy, I have a three-year-old son at home, and it right now is dangerous to be pregnant in the state of Ohio. And we need to put that decision into the hands of people, the mothers, the women who are pregnant, their families, their doctors, to be able to make a decision about what is best for their lives and their families. And I ask you, if a vote yes on issue one is a vote for me, whether or not you cast your ballot for me for city council or not, which I hope you will.
Well, before I forget, because around me, I can talk too much and I forget to tell you who I am, Luis Gil, running for District Two. We are in the same district right here, and you heard from her, Intel is not in Columbus. So I just want to bring to the fact that we need to work on this together. It's not working currently. I just want to bring that little balance somehow that is going to bring to Columbus, because I've been called to every area, London, South London, Southfield, come and talk to us. It's not working. I just want to bring a different perspective, a different angle, because we need to work together in the city. It is our city. Just go to the other cities, they don't have the same issues. Westerville, Dublin, New Albany, how is that working over there? So we need to bring a little formula here. We can't be doing the same thing and expect different results. So I'm willing to do this. I'm here involved in the community for the last twenty years. I'm a translator in different communities to help the community. That was had been, I did it for free in the beginning, but they were taking too much of my time that I just decided, we need to pay you for this. That's my volunteerism that I bring into the city council that we desperately need it, and we need to study hard on the tax abatements. Dr. Joe Montel.
Thank you.
So I'm not going to promote other people, but I will vehemently argue that things are going very well with this council, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve with each and every one of them. My name is Emmanuel Reamey. I'm proud to serve. As in my sixth year of council, I was proud to be a neighborhood leader, the president of the Northern Community Council, to bring that neighborhood lens to council. So whether it was being over here on the Hilltop, being on the west side, the south side, the east side, I knew what that perspective was. I am proud to be the chair of the Public Safety Committee, which means that my goal is to make sure that we become a city that answers every single call that comes into the city of Columbus the right way every single time. And so that is my passion project. That is the thing that I stay up at night about. And so whether that's alternative response, violence prevention, you know, all the things that we're working on and investing significantly in, that's what we're there to do. I'm proud to serve with my colleagues. Again, my name is Emmanuel Reamey, and humbly ask for your vote.
I'll end the same way I started by saying thank you for being here, and thank you for being engaged, given the pivotal moment we find ourselves in as a city. These are all complex issues that we try to tackle in one minute, which is nearly impossible. So I encourage you to follow me on social media or go to my website at whiteforcolombia.com to connect directly with me. And we can answer more of those questions a little bit more detail. For over a decade, I've worked at the center of the public-private nonprofit sectors, negotiating public-private partnerships, organizing workforce development programs, and working on policy issues to move our region and state forward. My guiding principle in life, instilled and being by my parents, has been to seek to create positive change in all that I do. It's how I've chose the organizations that I've worked for, the boards that I've served on. And if voted on by the voters, I'd be honored to continue that tradition on Columbus City Council. My name is Chris Weich. I humbly ask for your support to represent you from District One on Columbus City Council. I want to remind you to vote all nine districts. And it's important that we continue to drill that into people, that they have a right to choose all of their council members. And I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
So first of all, this is the best of us tonight. As I look out here and I see our area commissioners that I get the opportunity to work with, I see our west side leaders that I get an opportunity to work with, I see our fellow elected officials, folks that want to be elected officials, this is the best of us. And we have an amazing opportunity as a city right now to decide who we want to be. And, you know, Luis talked earlier about, or someone else talked about, how did we not know? How did we not project? Right now is us deciding. Right now is us putting a stake in the ground about the direction that we want to go as a city. And we get to decide that together. I told you why I started on council, why was I inspired to be on council, but my guiding principle on council is to be invested. If it's not for the people, the prosperity of our people and families, then it's not for us. And if you look at the programs that I have put forth, if you look at whether it's pay equity or reproductive rights or immigrants, migrants, and refugees, whatever it may be, it's always rooted in our people. I look forward to your vote. I look forward to seeing an early vote tomorrow. You and this battle started by the end of District Eight.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to close this event by thanking all candidates for their participation in our democratic process. This recording, this report is, will be viewable on the League of Women Voters Facebook and YouTube pages. We urge all of you to make a voting plan now. Early voting starts October the eleventh, and election day is November the seventh. Please check our voter guide at vote411.org for a full list of candidates. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and have a good night.
And if anybody's interested in a library levy sign, I'll be out in the parking lot. Just look for me to the left of the door.